And I'd like everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. And afterwards, we are going to take a moment of silence. Unfortunately, Ms. Joanne Insato, a teacher at John Adams Middle School, who started in Edison Township in the year 2000. She passed away unfortunately, so we will have a standing moment of silence after the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mrs. Matiker?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Here.
Mr. Mohamad Patel?
Here.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move to a president's report now. And I'm going to make a presentation. If anybody on the board would like to see the screen, I'm going to step back so I could see the screen. And anyone watching at home, I hope that you could see me. Okay. So what we're talking tonight is about our committee assignments. You've, you might have seen it online. We've now posted it on our Board of Education website. And we've worked very, very hard in creating new committee assignments for this year, and most importantly, adding descriptions to the committees. And I hope by articulating these committee descriptions and assignments tonight, we're able to promote the atmosphere of transparency in the district, and everyone can understand what our thought process was in assigning these new committees. The first slide you see here is very exciting. It's about the onsite COVID-19 testing in our schools. On the bottom, you'll see that over 1,000 people, 1,103 tested, people were tested in just one week. And that was from the 8th to the 15th. It's a lot of people. Every, every single day, we have actually six days a week that we offer testing in this-
Saturday.
This Saturday at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. There will be testing at the cafeteria. So you just show up, you don't need an appointment. You could just show up, and it's open to all members of the community. The Edison Township Public Schools' mission statement. The mission of the public schools of Edison Township is to ensure that all students achieve at the highest level of academic success. The district, in partnership with the community, will provide a safe, supportive learning environment which promotes self-worth and encourages productive contributions to a diverse and constantly evolving global society. Here we have our board committees for the year. We, at any point, reserve the right to add ad hoc committees. So although these committees exist as standing committees, we do reserve the right and encourage any projects that come online, any ideas that come up throughout the year. We will be adding committees as needed. Here we have budget planning and oversight, performance monitoring, curriculum, township liaison, food and nutrition, policy and facility improvement. Budget planning and oversight. This represents a synergy of all the board's goals, strategic and operational planning, and applying those items to the annual budget preparation. The committee will oversee small improvement projects and infrastructure maintenance and repair. The committee will keep track of annual financial obligations, such as vendor contracts related to daily operations of the school district, including transportation, purchasing, planning, et cetera. Discussions related to facilities, such as new building projects, land acquisition, and school renovations are not permitted in this committee. We'll talk about that later. Our performance monitoring committee. This is a committee that will meet and also offer Zoom accessibility for those parents that cannot make it to a committee meeting in person. You can tune in at home. And this is responsible for, this committee is responsible for keeping track of the district's educational and operational performance, including hosting Zoom meetings for parents and PTOs, PTAs, to voice their concerns. Topics can include academics, food, transportation, parent help desk, enrollment, back-to-school issues, and others as deemed pertinent. The committee will have an inward and outward face. It will meet regularly with the administration, that's our internal facing, to discuss and identify potential issues and assist as needed through policy and goal setting. This committee has direct influence on action items for the entire board to consider. So this, this committee collects the data from the public. We report to the public what we're learning. We get feedback from the public, and we analyze how we did. So the idea here is for those parents who don't have access to certain social media channels, if you don't have access to Facebook and WhatsApp and some different things, this is a way to officially participate with the board. And the board can interact with the administration and report back to you at the next meeting what we've done to fix and assist you with your issues at the school. Curriculum. This, this committee works directly with our chief academic officer and superintendent to meet and exceed the educational goals of the district by providing appropriate support and foundational framework for our students to achieve maximum success. The committee will discuss and review important issues related to curriculum and special and end instruction across the district. In addition, the committee will deliberate on issues related to special education, bilingual education, technology integration, student achievement, student assessment, and programmatic areas, such as counseling services and guidance. The committee will meet periodically with parents of children with special needs. The goal is to strengthen student achievement by supporting efforts and policies that ensure all students reach the maximum of their potential. The special education group. We had a special education committee. It has been enveloped into this committee. This committee meets often. It will tackle all issues, including special education. Importantly, our CPAG committee, which is our special education parent group, okay? Will still meet. That's a state mandated group that we've had lots of success with Dr. Tuohy. Still meeting, we will still do that. We are very excited to do that. We'll have a terrific group of parents, okay? And often with this curriculum committee, we will be meeting. So it is a fantastic opportunity to talk about all curriculum, including special education. The next one is township liaison. And our township liaison committee was very, very strong last year. And under Ms. White's leadership, we're continuing the same trajectory. We're going to continue to build and enhance a partnership with the town, local Edison government, promote a culture of healthy collaboration and positive engagement. Discussions in the committee will focus on shared services, collaborations on improving school and town services, including finding land for a new school, a Stellton School project, and other such properties. And issues where cooperation will be mutually beneficial. Discussions in the committee will foster a shared sense of concern for the community and boost morale, pride, and confidence in the school system and our town. Food and nutrition. The committee should meet periodically with individual school leaders and stakeholders to understand issues related to food, nutrition, including quality, quantity, compliance, and other related topics. The committee should present findings from such meetings to the school board to develop actionable items as needed. As we know, the board worked very hard to foster our new food vendor relationship, and we're excited to continue that relationship this year. And our policy committee. The policy committee makes recommendations to the full board about changes to current policies, additions of new policies, and deletion of outdated policies based on changes in law, audits, and recommendations from administration with regard to district programs, pupils, employees, finances, property, operations, and community. The committee also monitors change and trends affecting public education and considers new policies to address those changes. The committee will assess district goals and introduce policies that will enhance student and district success. And this one is a new one. It's called the Facility Improvement Committee, okay? This is a new concept, and we're going to try it out. And I really believe that this is going to work. We're going to talk about our goals. And our goals are agreed upon in common. Solve overcrowding, starting with the high, or starting with the high schools, and assist the superintendent in developing a long-range infrastructure plan. All meetings will be in public, except when discussing details of financing, land, or legal issues. So what's exciting about this is that, as we know, we have a board comprised of nine members. And as soon as we go beyond four members, it is a public meeting, okay? I can't possibly choose four people that care more about overcrowding than the other five. All nine of us care about overcrowding, facilities, the improvement of those facilities. And we will be meeting in the hall, and we'll be meeting together. What does that mean? It means that the public gets to join us. And we're going to have committee of the whole meetings in public. And we hopefully, as a community together, under the board's leadership, solve some of the infrastructure and remodeling, renovation, and building goals that we share together. And one final note. You'll notice that the committees are comprised of three individuals on each committee. And the fourth slot is for the president and vice president. We do that so this way we become more efficient, and the president and the vice president are able to collect all of the, our leadership team can collect all of the information and make it more efficient in communicating with our administration. In the event that the president or vice president is unable to attend, the committee chairperson can assign a member to fill that vacancy. So again, we're working together, all things possible. I appreciate everyone listening, but if you didn't catch all that, the good news is everything's online. We posted everything online. The idea here is to be very, very transparent. I hope that if anyone has good ideas about our committees, we can talk about them. And you don't need, you didn't need to write all that down. We are very, very accessible. You could look at it anytime you want. It's on our district website. So thank you for your time. We're going to go back to our regularly scheduled programming now. We'll just pause a moment to raise the screen. Okay, thank you. Dr. Reagan? Would you like to introduce the resolution for the appointment of the general board council?
Absolutely. We have one resolution to present tonight that we're going to vote on. Be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education hereby appoints David P. Rubin, Esquire of the Bush Law Group LLC, as board attorney for the period January 20th, 2022, through June 30th, 2022. And that the board shall pay the firm an hourly rate of $160 per hour, plus fee reimbursement for costs. And that the board president and business administrator hereby authorize to execute an agreement on behalf of the board. And that notice of this appointment shall be provided as required by NJSA 18A, colon, 18A dash 5A, parentheses, 1. And that this recognition, I'm sorry. And that this resolution and the agreement shall be maintained on file and available for public inspection in the board's office.
Thank you.
Board President? Board President?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Shi.
I hope this is oversight. But usually when we do the resolution, we allow board member comments, we allow public comments before we actually vote it out. So I would suggest that we introduce that onto the agenda to allow the board member to ask questions, to have comments, and the public to have comments. This is-
Any board member comments?
Board President, I have a question.
Yes.
About the process, basically. How many law firms are interviewed for this position? And how many board members have interviewed any of this, any of other firms? That's my question. Is there RFP process also?
Unfortunately, we were not able to do an RFP process. Actually, the, the contract, the current contract expires in just a couple of weeks. We don't have an attorney on contract as of January 31st. Traditionally, a few months before the contract expires, the board would simply extend that. It's usually at 12 months at a time. It didn't happen. In my due diligence, I would like to have done a RFP in light of the fact that we don't have general counsel pointed beyond January 31st. I thought it was in the board's best interest to do some due diligence. I was, I'm very proud to say that I did a lot of research. And I am very proud to say that David Rubin, who I'm proposing here, has a very long track record of success in the industry. And, you know, I'm very proud to hopefully have a motion tonight to approve him.
So my question was, how many firms? This is the only firm? And how many-
No, it was not the only firm that I did research on. I did research on many firms.
Okay. Is there any other board member involved in this process or interviewed this attorney?
Also, Ms. Matiger, the vice president. I consulted her on it, yes.
Is there interview process, or this is-
No, not an interview process. I did a lot of research, and I was able to do a lot of due diligence on this.
Okay. So no other firms and no other board members have interviewed this?
I researched many firms.
Thank you.
Board President, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Which law firm does he belong to?
I, Bush Law Group, out of Metuchen.
Is that the same Bush Law Group that is owned by the Metuchen mayor?
Yes, exact same.
Jonathan Bush?
Yes, exact same.
Is that also the same law firm that basically overcharged us last time when we had them as our lawyer on hand here?
So part of my due diligence process was I looked at every single line item, every line item of every legal charge since 2010. And respectfully, Mr. Patel, I would disagree with the characterization of it being an overcharge. I'm sure that if anyone requests the information, it's possible to get the information regarding the legal fees. However, I'm confident that overcharge is not something that I feel was part of the characterization of what happened.
Since, Board President, you did your research on this lawyer for us. How many lawyers are in that Bush Law Group? And how many districts does Bush Law Group serve currently?
I believe that there's 12 lawyers, about 12 lawyers at Bush Law Group. I focused my, my research on David Rubin. However, I'm confident that the law firm represents, I think, over 60 districts. Mr. Rubin could tell us how many he represents.
So just to get this straight. The law firm represents over 60 districts, and there's only 12 lawyers in that law group. Do you think we, a township of 100,000-plus residents, 17,000 students, will get a fair representation from this law group?
Yes.
And also, how well are they connected to the county? And what kind of overreach is being done through that law firm?
That I can't speak to. I could tell you that Mr. Rubin has an excellent reputation and is, is very well-known, and has, has practiced law for many, many years.
Board President?
Yes.
Can I say a few things?
Yes, Ms. Matiger.
I just pulled David Rubin's bio. He has a GAD from Rutgers Law School, and he has his bachelor's from Duke University. And David Rubin was admitted to the bar in 1977 and has devoted his practice to education law, commercial disputes, professional responsibility matters, and appellate litigation. He has argued numerous precedents, setting cases at all levels of state and federal court system, generating over 50 published judicial opinions. Mr. Rubin has achieved national prominence of the field of education law through his representation of public school districts and private schools throughout New Jersey, his longstanding leadership role in the National School Boards Association, 3,000-member Council of School Attorneys, and his reputation as a frequent author of school law issues and a sought-after speaker at conferences and seminars throughout the country. Mr. Rubin has been appointed to numerous positions of public responsibility, including chair of the New Jersey State Bar Association's Professional Responsibility and Unlawful Practice School Law and Equity Jurisprudence Committees, member of the New Jersey Supreme Court Ad Hoc Committee on Law Firm Trade Names, municipal prosecutor and municipal judge of the city of New Brunswick, secretary of the Millsix County Fee Arbitration Committee, board member and chair of COSA, ex-official member of the National School Boards Association Board of Directors, president of New Jersey Association of School Attorneys, lecturer in education law at Rutgers University, Graduate School of Education, member of editorial board of New Jersey Lawyers, and court-appointed mediator, arbitrator, and fiscal agent. Mr. Rubin has received AV preeminent designation from Martindale-Hubel Legal Directory and the highest rating for competence character based on confidential peer reviews. He has been recognized by Super Lawyers Magazine and Best Lawyer in America, and was selected as a Lawyer of the Year by the Best Lawyers in America for ethics and professional responsibility law. And there's a whole bunch of publications that he has. And if I, if I read, it's probably going to take an hour or two just reading all of the publications. But some other things I would like to mention. He was the New Jersey Super Lawyers Top Rated Education Appellate 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, till 2020. He has got the award for the NJSBA Council of School Attorneys' Distinguished Service Award, New Jersey Association of School Attorneys' Distinguished Service Award, New Jersey Commission on Professional Lawyer of the Year Award. He, some of, I'll just mention two of his publications.
It's very impressive.
Excuse me. Go ahead, Shivie. I'm sorry.
So some of the publications that he has includes "Parental Tracking with GPS," "Setting Rules for Teacher-Sstudent Texting," "Legalities of Classroom Apps," "Legal Ethics of Internal Investigations," "Reflections on Tinker," "Legal Ethics: Pointers and Pitfalls When Picking Counsel," "Standardized EPs," "One Size Fits None," "Data Privacy Laws Update," "Guide to Student Protection," "Evolving Rules for Drones," "Legal Ethics of Internal School District Investigation," "Monel Liability for Following State Law," "Emerging Consequences and unanswered Questions," "Collier-Carrier COSA Edition," "Ethical Concentrations When Starting a Practice," "Confidentiality vs. Transparency," "Disciplining Students for Off-" I mean, the list just goes on and on and on. So without further going into all the details, which is actually available on the website, anybody can Google his name and see what he stands for. I think if we are able to appoint him, our school district would be very fortunate to get guidance from such an accomplished attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Patel?
Yes. I would like to ask our board vice president a question in regards to the Bush Law Group when we had them in place here. Why did they quit in the middle of their contract? Six months prior to them finishing up their contract? And if they were able to do that brazenly and just say, "Okay, we're not, we're out of here," in that sense, why do you think it's prudent for us to hire them back again? Do you think that we're going to get the same service and the same type of situation coming in from them in representation?
Board President, can I answer?
Would you like to answer?
Yes.
Sure.
First, I'm not their secretary, so I wouldn't know their reasons why they would quit. But going by the track record of what I have seen in the past when I was elected to the Board of Education and started serving in 2016, I mean, the board learned so much. Anything and everything that we learned about ethics and various other things, I think that they did a phenomenal job. And I think the most important thing that I actually look at was when James Monroe School burned down, and, and we were having trouble getting, you know, the insurance company to pay, pay for the school. It was the Bush Law Firm that guided us through the process. And so we had a referendum for the, for James Monroe School, and the referendum was approved by the public for probably about $25 million, if I remember correctly. However, the Bush Law Firm guided us, guided us through the process. And we were able to actually, you know, get the money through the insurance, and the taxpayers were not hurt. So I think they have done a terrific job in the past. They have a good track record.
Board President?
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that. In regards to, just in case, let's say the Bush Group wasn't there. If there was another lawyer group there, would you think that they would give you the same amount of service that the Bush Law Group would have given you? Or any law firm, for that matter? Would it have, wouldn't it have been their prerogative to do that? Because that was their, the reason why they were basically chosen, right? So it, it's not just that Bush Law Group is the all-knowing in regards to the insurance process. I'm sure any law group would have done it. My follow-up question basically is, why are we going to have a quitter team come in once they already quit on us before? Why would you want to hire the same law group in this process?
Is, is that a rhetorical question, or would you like me to answer that?
It's an answer. I would like to know. Why are we choosing someone that has been basically, they just said, "Okay, we're out of here." Why are we going to try to bring them back if they're going to do that type of, this service to the board here?
My knowledge of the situation is I don't agree with your characterization of them quitting. I'm very proud of this resolution. I'm proud of David Rubin as a potential candidate for our board attorney. And in my mind, it's, I think Ms. Matiger mentioned that he, he became a lawyer in the 1970s, okay? This is many, many years ago. This is before any kind of, I think you're referring to things that happened recently. He has a very, very long track record of integrity, reputation, and he represents districts with much, much overlap, okay? With board presidents changing and, and people on the board changing, Mr. Rubin continues in those districts. And there's a reason for that. He runs with integrity. And I believe in his capability, his capability as our attorney.
I don't, Board President, I don't question-
And, and I'm sorry, one more point. You ask, can another lawyer do the job? Yes. There's many lawyers and many education lawyers, many. So the answer is yes. Many attorneys can do the job that Mr. Rubin will do for us. This is the gentleman that I feel most comfortable bringing to this board to have a vote.
Board President?
Yes.
I don't question Mr. Rubin's integrity or his education or his skill set. What I do question is the law group that he is representing and the process of which, that they conducted themselves when they were given the opportunity to represent the board of education.
I think your point is heard.
Board President?
Yes. Mr. Shi.
So just to go back to what the board vice president mentioned about the James Monroe Elementary School. If anyone who's served at the time, they will know we hired another lawyer, David Alden, David Aldenston, to be the lawyer to handle with the insurance about that school. And, you know, that's, I'm not going to say any more on that. So just want to clarify, the resolution is we have special ed, we have labors, we have all the others. have all the others that, you know, in our district. Is the Bush Law Firm taking over the entire, the attorney for, for all those other functional areas?
At this point, yes, however, there's going to be a period of time in the next few weeks where all of the current cases that are open, there will be a transition period, and we'll collectively, not us, but the attorneys, will discuss what stays with the previous attorney, what goes to Mr. Rubin.
Okay, so, I have, I am not here to question Mr. Rubin's qualification, and I have seen his, you know, reputation, I'm not here to question that. The, the thing is, I am questioning is about the process of selecting the lawyer, okay? And the expertise of this law firm. As we know, there was a case with one of the elementary school principal, and the Bush Law had to get Judge Berman to come in and interview a lot of the Board members. The people who were serving at that time knows Judge Berman charges four hundred and fifty bucks an hour, right? So, and also moving forward, I know this Bush Law Firm is a very good educational law firm, but we have a lot of other issues that's going to face us. One is land use. The Stilton School is on the agenda, you know, we'll, we'll have a lot of land use issues with that school. And I'm not sure is Bush Law Firm is capable of doing those land issue, land use issues. If they go out and get somebody else, which a lot of times could be their friend or whatever, they're going to charge us a little bit more money. So, I don't know, when you do your research, have you done that research as well? And just to go back to Mrs. Peng's question, I know you did a lot of research, besides you, anybody else who interviewed the attorneys? You know, you consulted the Vice President, did you, besides you, anybody else interviewed the attorney?
Actually, I believe that all of us spoke, with the exception of Ms. Peng, we all spoke about this on Monday.
Correct, you did talk to me-
And the reason I did that was to give everyone on this Board, all eight, I was not able to get a hold of Ms. Peng, but all eight of us were on the same page on Monday, so everybody could do their due diligence and do their research.
You, you did, yeah, you did mention, we did have a conversation, yes.
So, in terms of the conversations, there was no conversation, we spoke at length about it.
Yes.
And the reason we spoke at length about it was so this way you knew tonight that we would have this type of discussion, and obviously, if we had any issues, we could talk about it.
Yeah, so, my, my question is, you know, besides you, who interviewed Mr. Rubin? And besides Mr. Rubin, what, just, that's a follow-up to Mrs. Peng's question, anybody else that you interviewed?
Ms. Madiger, the Vice President.
Okay, so she interviewed both of them?
Interview, we, we chatted, yes.
Did she interview them, both of them?
We talked to Mr. Rubin, yes. Yeah, what's the question?
We spoke, we did not meet. I'm seeing Mr. Rubin for the first time today, I, we met on Zoom.
Okay, so the question is, you know, the attorney is for the whole Board?
Yes.
Right? So, if it's for the whole Board, the Board, other Board members should have a say to it, and I do-
You do, you have a vote tonight.
Yeah, I, I do, no, we need to understand, you know, you know, need to talk to them and so on like that, we have not spoken to them. But the thing is, excuse me, so, we need, so in, in the past, what we did is, we do the RFP, we have multiple law firms, and we pick a handful of them, and the entire Board interview, and the entire Board vote on. I do understand that the contract is coming up in January 31st, right? But we still have ten days, and it does not prevent the lawyer to carry over to next month if there's something. And just to reiterate about what the, Mr. Mohin Patel said, two years ago, the firm quit on us with six months left on the contract, I don't know what the reason is, and it's a very good question, is a firm going to do the same thing this year? And, you know, the thing is, they have any reason to leave, but the problem is that in January two years, this, last year, we just have a new Board, we just had, on that day, we sworn in the, we, we fill the, the position on, on, on that January meeting. And that night, we had interview, we have to interview all these four law firms, and, or five law firms, I don't remember, and the meeting dragged all the way to two o'clock in the morning, if I recall. And that was not prepared for the Board to do, on the very first meeting, is to do this. So, to me, that's a disservice to our district from this particular firm. And to, to, to go back to, I'm glad you looked at the ten-year charge, but if you look at the calendar year 2017, our district paid the Bush Law Firm five hundred and three thousand and changes. At that time, the Bush Law Firm's hourly rate is a hundred and forty-five dollars, and if you do a hundred and forty-five, eight, eight hours a day, you will calculate what's four hundred and thirty-three days of work in a three hundred and sixty-five day calendar, okay? Is that a fair charge? People might think it is, you know, whatever, this is academic, this is calendar year 2017, right? And just to, you know, in the same year, if you look at another line item, we paid another firm a hundred and forty thousand dollars, a hundred and forty thousand legal fees to the other attorney. So, at that time, the Bush Law Firm was the counsel of, of this Board. So, and we also have insurance for, that's a special ed case. We should have just taken the, the insurance offer and, 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 and just take it, and instead, we end up fighting, we end up paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the fee.
Mr. Shi, I respectfully, I have to disagree with some of your characterization, characterizations here. I don't agree with the word quit, I don't think anyone is deserting us even a few years ago, and I also, I have every single line item since 2010, and you could look at it. And I'm sure you did.
I, I, yes.
In my, in my opinion, and in fact, last year, there was a budget line item for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our legal fees. I'm going to suggest to this Board that we, and our Budget Committee, that we decrease that budget to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty thousand is too much. This meeting's recorded, I'm going to advise the Budget Committee to decrease that to three hundred and fifty, so any characterization that this legal fee will go up to five hundred thousand plus is just not true.
Well, but that was, that was a, that was a item I received in 2017.
I expected that the Board might not agree on this, and I expected that some people would be skeptical. And that's the reason I reached out to each Board Member individually to discuss this. I also suggested that this resolution take us to only six months from now. I, as a Board President, and us as a Board, we have the, we have the ability to appoint, just like you did last year at this time, a twelve-month attorney. We're allowed to only do twelve months at a time. What I'm suggesting we do is we appoint it for six months. And a few months from now, we can all talk about it again, and we could sit up here and we could debate, and we could, instead of evaluating what happened a few years ago, we could evaluate what happened in just the last few months, and we could say, did they do a good job? And if Mr. Rubin does a good job, I think we'll be happy to extend it, and we could talk, and if you feel they're overcharging us, or you think something's unfair, we can obviously move to an RFP process, we could do whatever the Board decides, this is not a dictatorship, this is us together, as a Board, we're going to decide these things. That's why I'm asking for a six-month appointment versus a twelve-month, which is what we're entitled to.
Right, so, so the, the Board President, allow me to continue on this.
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Seems to be that you and the Board Vice President was the one who decided, Mr. Rubin?
That's incorrect, we're voting on this tonight, we don't decide anything, we all have an equal vote, my vote doesn't matter more than your vote.
So, so, okay, and in the past, what we did is, we had a committee, we had the whole Board interviewing them, okay? And then, after the interview-
We, we would have that time, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we would have that time if there was an attorney on record beyond a week and a half from now.
Board President?
Let me, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. So, what, what is the rush about appointing today, right? So, let the other attorney finish up their term, you still have the process of go to RFP and appoint in, in, in February. So, excuse me, so, just go through the process, it might end, end up the same result, right?
Mr. Shi, I would ask you the same question, given Mr. Rubin's credentials, one, one question is, what's the rush? On the other question is, what's the problem? We have the opportunity to hire someone who has an impeccable record, who has decades in the business, and we have the opportunity to hire him, with an equal vote, all nine of us can use our judgment, and if we're comfortable for the next six months, we use this, this gentleman as our counsel.
Well, the issue is the process, and the issue is the-
Our point, point is taken, yes. Process, I get it.
Yes, and the other Board Member did not have a say-
You have a say right now, you have a say.
In, in picking this, this attorney, we have a say, but this is already on the agenda, right? So, if you actually have a interviewing process, it might come out with the same resolution, right? It's, it's, it's the same conclusion, that's, Mr. Rubin is the attorney. So, I'm just saying that the process was not followed, the process was like, just Board President, okay? And with a consultation of the Board Vice President, Board Vice President didn't even met with him, and then you decided to bring him in and put on the agenda, right? So, folks, my, my fans over there are talking about, has been, you know, saying, hey, I'm the dictator, I did not even do this, okay? So, to me, this is not the process we should follow, we should have the entire Board have a say, and, you know, delay the appointment maybe for a month or whatever, let's, let's all have a say into this, and the, the conclusion might be the same.
Board President?
I think your, I think your point is taken, thank you, Mr. Shi.
Board President, I just, I just wanted to say a couple of things first. According to school law, an RFP is not required for professional appointments. So, you could hire an architect, you could hire a lawyer, you could hire whoever, a professional, without doing an RFP. This has been done in the past, when Ramon Rivera was appointed, I remember that the Board got the resolution, majority of the Board, not majority actually, four members of the Board got the resolution, twenty minutes before the actual Board meeting started. So, so it's, it's a thing I, that has happened before, but I'm glad that the Board President had a chance to meet with, you know, with you, Jerry, with Mohin, for almost three hours over the weekend to kind of go over the whole thing, and I'm glad that, you know, you guys were able to kind of mull over this. The second thing, just wanted to go back to James Monroe, I know that a different lawyer did the James Monroe, however, the initial guidance of how to proceed is provided by the existing lawyer. So, just wanted to make, make that point, because that was just the guidance that I spoke about. And finally, as of December 31st, we don't have a lawyer, the Board, the contract-
January 31st.
Sorry, sorry, January 31st. As of January 31st, it's, it's January 20th today, in eleven days, we don't have a lawyer. So, this was something that was important and urgent, and I hope, or I wish that this had been done earlier, so, so we were not left in this lurch where we are scrambling to, you know, find a lawyer, because we don't even have a lawyer. So, this should have never happened. You know, the Board should not have been, the incoming leadership should not have been left in a position where they realized that there was no lawyer. So, with that, I hand it over back to you, Douglas.
Board President, can I?
Hold on, Mr. Patel.
Yes. Quick question in regards to what Ms. Madoker has just said. In regard, in regards to services and so forth, I, I say it's, yes, you can go ahead and choose whoever you want to choose, but I think the best process would be to do the RFP and get the right firm, and get the best value for the taxpayers of Edison. Secondly, what I would like to suggest is, since you're saying, let's give Mr. Rubin six months, why don't we just allow, why don't we extend the current lawyer for six months, and in that timeframe, we can evaluate whether this law firm is someone that we want to go with, or if there's another law firm that we can also choose from. So, I would say, instead of doing the other opposite way, where you just go ahead and let go of this lawyer and choose this lawyer without having the Board's input, I would say it's better that we do it the other way, you extend the offer to-
Your, your point is taken. Ms. White?
All right, Douglas.
Talk closer.
Now, just let, let me just be clear with this.
Jenny, Jenny, get closer.
Closer to the mic, please.
There, thank you.
Sorry, we're going to retain, or we're looking to retain Mr. Rubin for six months, and then all of this is going to be reviewed again, is that, is that my understanding?
The right way is that we do it before, well before the six-month period, and we have a in-depth conversation, and as a Board, we decide if we're happy with the services.
Okay.
So, I would say three or four months from now is the appropriate time to have that conversation.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board President, I have a question.
Yes.
So, does this, first of all, thank you for doing all the research on the, on the firms, does this firm has any experience on sexual assault cases?
I'm sure they do.
They do.
No, they don't.
What we will, when, if they don't have direct experience, I'm sure they have plenty of experience handling these cases, and we'll talk about that. We're, our ultimate goal here is to do what's best for the residents and taxpayers of Edison and the students. We're not, we're not proposing a, an attorney here that is not qualified.
Mm-hmm, but they don't have experience or expertise in this matter, and we now currently have over about ten cases.
The gentleman being proposed today has been an educational lawyer for thirty or, thirty years plus.
Yeah, I understand.
I believe, I believe that he's probably come across a, a case that you're describing.
And we do, the current firm does have, have been investigating and doing a lot of research on these cases, we have about ten cases, eight cases like this, and they have done a year of research, and the transition to the new firm is going to cost a lot of money.
Oh, I, just to be clear, I said it before, but I'll reiterate it, it's not necessarily going to, all of the cases don't necessarily transfer over, we're going to have an intelligent conversation, but the professionals will have an intelligent conversation, and they should know that whatever makes sense financially, skill level, success, potential success, that should stay with the current firm or transition over, it depends what makes the most sense.
Okay.
Okay?
And just back to the process, I, I do have a problem with the process, because I remember clearly last year, all of the Board Members, we have RFP, all of the Board Members interviewed several firms, they brought their brochure, they gave a presentation, we had a closed session discussion, and then we vote on it, that was the process last-
That point is taken, I, I, I understand the point.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
So, since Mrs. Madoker brought up the appointment of the Ramon Rivera's firm, I just want to clarify, and I see Frank is over here as well, and, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure you're here to talk about the appointment. So, I'm good to see you, by the way, you look good, right? The thing is, at least that time, multiple Board Members met with multiple law firms, okay? And you've been quoting this and say, that's not the right process, right? So, it cannot be, it's a, you know, so, if that's not the right process, then let's, 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 let's keep doing it, right? All right, so, my only concern is the process, again, I'm not qualified, I'm not saying anything about the qualification of Mr. Rubin.
I think you're on the record, I, I understand.
So, it's a process, I don't think we, the other Board Members actually had a chance to speak to Mr. Rubin, I, I know what, we have to vote on it, okay? But that does not mean that we met with him, okay? We did not have a chance to meet with other lawyers, you and the Board Vice President did, okay? Only two person. You, you know, you, you, the, the attorney is for the entire Board, the other Board Members should have a say into it before they actually come in to vote.
You will, right now, and, well, that's why I gave you, I, we met, we met well ahead of this meeting?
Yes.
Because I wanted to give you enough time, if you had any questions.
Correct, you did.
I'm, I'm sure that if Mr. Rubin received a phone call from you, if he, if you wanted to chat with him, that would have been very appropriate.
But that's not my position, right? That's what we, we have to have-
So, it's my, it's, so it's my position to, I'm the only person that should talk to?
No, 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 it should be the entire Board talking the same time with the candidates, and then we decide who the person is.
That's, that's how you've always done it?
Right.
As a leadership, as leadership here?
That's what we did.
You did?
That's what we did in the past couple of years, okay?
Point taken.
And, and-
Any other Board comments?
No, 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 I haven't finished yet, okay? Mrs. Madoker, you know, alluded to the appointment of Ramon Rivera, but again, that was for multiple law firms, more than one Board Member spoke to them, right? And she's quoting here, says that's not the right process, okay? So, last year, we, we, you know, and the year before, we do the RFP- So last year, we, you know, and the year before, we do the RFP, the entire board interviewed them. So if you think that's not the right process, this is even worse than that.
Just...
So that's what it is, and, you know, that...
You think telling the rest of the board 20 minutes before is worse than what we did where we told you on Monday? You think that that's worse?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, please, please.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Let's be respectful, Mr. Shi, I'm sorry.
No, can you repeat what you said, I'm sorry?
I said, do you characterize letting everyone know 20 minutes before the meeting about a resolution as being more fair than telling you four days ahead?
No, that's not, that's not true, actually...
That's what I thought you just said.
No, actually, it's not...
Board President?
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Shi could finish.
I have the floor. So actually, when we spoke to the lawyer, Shevy, you know that, the second the lawyer walked out the room, he called Jonathan Bush. Jonathan Bush knew ahead of time, oh, let me finish, okay?
If you want to talk about the history of Edison Board of Education politics, it's going to be very difficult to move this district forward in 2022.
No, because Mrs. Madiger brought it up...
If you want to vote no, it's your right to vote no.
No, yeah, yeah, but I, there's a reason, allow me, can you allow me to speak? You know, Mrs. Madiger brought it up, I did not. So if she brought it up, I hope you give me the opportunity to rebuttal on that, okay? So Ramon Rivera's firm did not get appointed in March. And that process of meeting the lawyer happened in December, so three months, so everybody knew. It's not, it's not news.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Board President?
Ms. Madiger.
Resolution, motion for the resolution.
We have a motion to pass the resolution?
Board President, I still have a, I have a question.
We have, Mr. Patel has a...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Before you move to resolution...
Yes, sir, Mr. Patel, sure.
Two things you just said, you said that if we go back into the history of the board, we will, we will continue for hours and hours. The problem is that we're actually doing that right now by appointing the same law firm that basically quit on us when they were given a chance. And the other thing that I want to say is, when, when Ms., I just lost my thought. But in regards to the same thing we're basically doing, you talk about integrity and honesty, not you, but in general, people sitting out there and clapping their head, that honesty and integrity, when you say those words, when do you follow through with them? Right now. Because when we did this last year, we had 11 RFPs come back with 11 lawyer firms, and we chose from their four, and then we came to the board and then decided which one we want to do, when every single board member had a chance to ask a question and go through the process. That hasn't been given to us. What I would suggest to do is, since we don't have that opportunity to get the RFP in time, we say we extend the current lawyer, law firm for another month or so while we get that process going, and we get the right law firm, we get the right services, we get the right rate, and we get the right representation without the hands coming in from other places pushing buttons that will basically affect residents of this township and the students. I think it's a big thing that we do.
Okay, point heard. Any other board member comments before we vote on the resolution?
So Board President?
Yes.
I, you know, I'll be, you know, asking to table this resolution, and let's discuss a little bit more, and, you know, we can go from there. It doesn't hurt...
I believe, Ms. Madiger first made a motion?
Yes, and I'll have, I'll make a motion to table it.
Motion to table, I'll second it.
There's a motion on the table.
Yeah, but I can also have a motion.
No, Ms. Madiger first made a motion, and then I allowed Mr. Patel to speak.
I'm sorry.
Her motion, her motion was to pass this resolution.
Board President, I'm sorry. That resolution was raised before the board member even finished our comments.
Right.
Before the public even had a chance to make any comments.
The public does not have to have comments on this, it's just the board gets to have comments.
No, no, the public also has a comments, chance to comment on the resolution.
We're confident in our legal advice. Ms. Madiger?
Nope.
Has a resolution?
Well, before that...
To pass this, and I am seconding it.
Okay, so...
Can we have a roll call?
Can I have a comment before we actually do the roll call?
Mr. Rivera?
Can I have, can I have a comment before I make, before you make a roll call? Can I have a comment before the roll call?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, the process was not followed.
That's not true.
We did, the whole board did not get a chance to meet the candidates. Obviously, only one or two person decided for the entire board, right?
That's not true, you have a vote right now to decide.
To put this lawyer onto the agenda, only two person who decided this. Although we had a conversation, but I did not have a chance to talk to the candidates. So if you think moving forward, the board, any of the board decisions, any of the things that's put on the agenda should be decided by one or two person. If you think moving forward, the district does not need to follow any of the process that was established, have all the board members have a say into deciding the candidate, then you vote yes, okay? If you think that the board should have a say, every board member is equally important in this, and I got reminded by my fellow board member, you know, Mrs. Conway, unfortunately she's not here, she says the only extra power the board president has is to put item on the agenda.
That's correct, my vote counts the same as your vote.
Correct.
Okay?
So, you know, I hope the other board members will be treated with respect, so they actually have a voice into the conversations.
Are you aware you are voting, and your vote?
I know, yes, I am.
And your vote counts the same as my vote?
Yes, but...
Can we do the roll call now?
Excuse me, can I finish, Board President?
Sure.
Can I finish this before you actually push for the roll call?
Sure.
Okay? So, I lost my thought. So if you want to continue this process, you vote to appoint this attorney. If you want to say, hey, let's discuss it a little bit, because there are still uncertainties about other sections, about, you know, the land use and all these others, the board should have a say as to who the firm is, let's, you know, I hope you can abstain or vote no, give us a chance to discuss it before we rush it. Again, I can say the conclusion might be the same, but let's give the other board members a little bit extra voice in deciding the candidate. That's all I'm going to say.
That's where, that's where I will disagree, that no one has an extra voice, we have equal voices.
Then this time, then this time, this time we have no voice.
Right now, we have a roll call, so we have a...
Board President, I still have a question.
We have a...
Can I speak, I have a question still?
Yes.
So, we are, as soon as anybody, any board member bring up a resolution, we're going to vote, we're going to suppress the public from commenting on it?
No.
We are not even giving the public a chance to comment on this?
It's not our policy, it's the law.
It's the law that we are now allowing public to comment on the resolution that we are voting on? It's their money eventually to pay for this attorney?
Ms. Peng, the appointment of a professional services resolution does not need the public comment, and the public will have plenty of time to comment today. They're more than welcome, they have six full minutes to comment, as much as they would like about this.
There's no need, doesn't mean that you have to forbidding it.
But for appointment of professional services, it does not have to happen right now.
But Board President, to have a courtesy...
Mr. Shi, yes.
To have a courtesy to the taxpayers, a lot of times it happens that, you know, public comments will swing the board member's thoughts left and right. So what is the harm of allowing them to comment? Because at the end of the day, they're paying this law firm $160, $160 bucks an hour, it's their money. So they should have a say before we actually vote on it. If we voted on it, that's already taken, they have no say, but they will come in a public comment after.
Point heard, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Shi. Okay, roll call, please.
Board President, I have one question, one last question, please, Board President?
One last question, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Patel.
What assurance can you give the taxpayers of Edison that there will be no unduly, basically, what can you assure the residents of Edison that you will have, you won't have the county pushing the issues or votes towards whatever, or legal advice towards whatever benefits them against the taxpayers of Edison? What assurance can you give the taxpayers of Edison?
I can't even answer that question. Mr. Rubin, Mr. Rubin has a long, long history of integrity. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohim Patel? Mr. Mohim Patel?
Absolutely not.
Mrs. White? Yes, with the six-month stipulation. Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
No.
Mr. Shi?
No.
Mrs. Madiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Six yeses and three nos. Motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rubin, if you'd like to join us up here, thank you. Next, we're going to move to a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President. First resolution that we have is, just take me a second to pull it up, this is school, this is School Board Recognition Month, and we do have a resolution on the agenda. I'm going to read it out loud, and we're going to vote on it on Tuesday's meeting. Whereas, the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2022 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time that all residents might acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And the Edison Board of Education is one of more than 580 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public schools and districts. And the Edison Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And New Jersey schools, local, and New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-K through 12th grade. And New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members who receive no remuneration for their services act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to the school administrators the public expectations for schools. And New Jersey can take pride in its schools with ranks which regularly rank among the nation's best in indicators such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress, as well as the preparation for college through advanced placement offerings, ACT and SAT assessments. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Edison Board of Education has hereby recognized the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the Edison Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local school boards of education and public school staffs towards the improvement of our children's education. That resolution will be on the agenda, and if I may just say a word or two, I often say this to the school board members, I personally thank you for all your efforts and all that you do, you represent the public, you do it out of the goodness of your heart, you do it as a volunteer service, you don't get paid to be here, and I do believe each and every one of you, while sometimes we have varying opinions and different perspectives, you are dedicated to the cause of doing what's best for the Edison Public Schools, and I'm fortunate to work with all of you. The next agenda...
Thank you, Dr. Briggin.
You're welcome. The next one we have is our approval of our bilingual ESL three-year plan. Each year, the state requires us to put together a three-year plan where we assess what we are currently doing, the current numbers of our students that meet those requirements, and how effective we are at that. That plan is, will be on the board agenda for review and discussion, and it has to be submitted to the Department of Education at the state level. There's a revised settlement agreement between a special needs student and the district. There's no change into the settlement, but when we referenced it at our last board meeting, we had the docket number incorrectly, so we changed that. You'll also find IMD, the Self-Assessment for Determining Grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. It's a self-assessment that's done to all of our schools across the district on an annual basis, how well we're implementing our programs, how well we are training our staff, how many resources we have to provide those, and you'll see our scores range in there from 71 to 78, which is the highest score. For curriculum and instruction, we do have some professional development opportunities for staff, as we come more and more out of the pandemic, more and more opportunities for in-person training, which is consistent with our past practice. Our added district placements under pupil special services report is updated there. As you know, on a monthly basis, our students who are in added district placements sometimes change placements, sometimes move in, sometimes move out, you'll see that reflected there. And there's also the addition of a professional services provider to provide bedside instruction to one of our students who is currently hospitalized. That's all I have, Mr. Board President.
Thank you. Moving to the finance report.
In the finance report, we have the approval of the minutes from the December caucus and public meetings. We have the investment report, the report of the board secretary, report of the treasurer of school monies. In the finance resolutions, we have the transfer of funds. We have the award of the bid from the roof maintenance and repair services. We also have the bid for the student transportation services for the remainder of the 21-22 school year. We have a change order from the Lincoln Elementary School. We have non-public school security aid program. We have our electronic transfers for our self-funded medical and prescription costs, as well as the bills list. In addition, we have the transportation report for January. And that's it for the finance report.
Board President, I had a few questions.
Moving to board member, open discussion.
So I just had a few questions. My first question, Dr. Briggin, is about the transportation. Does this mean that some students who are not getting transportation till now will be getting buses?
No, I believe the routes that we had there were routes that we were covering, and that's the routes that we put out for bid, so that it'll free up some of our drivers to maybe enhance the services we provide. And right now, everyone that's entitled to transportation has been getting it. Some of the delays were with the subscription busing. If somebody's on a route that is already had, already filled, if it's a full bus with 54 passengers, and we have 60 students that requested, there'd be a wait. So if some of the drivers, we have 27 drivers, I believe now, if we get these routes filled by our vendors, then we could free them up to perhaps provide additional services and transportation. And we're looking to hire as many drivers as we possibly can, with the anticipation of those 30 buses coming, and, you know, they were guaranteed by June delivery for next year.
And also, I read that there was a change in the requirement for getting the bus driver licensing, so now you don't, the drivers don't need to have the information on what's under the hood, so that might help us get more drivers.
Correct, there was a waiver put in place, although I think it's only until March, but it will definitely help in getting more drivers available to drive the buses.
And I had some more questions on the bill list. I know Elizabeth would do this all the time, and since she was doing it, I never had to ask those questions, but I just had a few questions on that. My first question is, on page 16, there is a bill list, it says $47,994 to CDW for technology supplies. Is that over a one-month period, or is it more than that? Page 16.
Yeah, I gotta pull up the bills, I don't have it currently, I think...
Sure, it's under check register of finance resolutions.
Give me one second. What page, Ms. Madiger?
Page 16 of the PDF.
CDW, which line, the 7,000 there?
It all adds up to $47,994.
I will double-check those exact POs, but I believe that was for the, when we outsourced some of the services, when we didn't hire, renew three of the technicians, we talked about it over the summer, that because the flow of that work sometimes is seasonal, it's more busy in September, October, and perhaps at the end of the year than during the middle of the year, that we outsourced those services to the company CDW who provided onsite support services. I believe that's what that is, but off the top of my head, I will confirm those POs to make sure that's accurate.
Okay, so is this serviced by a person, payment for software, online resource?
It's a person.
A person?
We had four people that provided services for a period of time. I believe the duration was from October through December. Again, I don't know this exact one, I can't look it up online. We had four people, and the total was, I think, 46 hours, and it was 46,000 an hour over that period of time. I forget the exact numbers, I will get that for you.
So this is, so this 48,000 is for a period of three months or four months?
I believe so, yes, I will find out that.
Okay, my other question is page 30, there is, I saw moving of modular unit from Lincoln to JP, and that's costing $106,300, and what is that?
It's a great question. As you know, the Lincoln addition is taking place there. Um, we had several portables there where we had classes, special ed, and kindergarten-level classes. They can't be onsite while the construction's taking place, so they were moved. Two were moved into, um, John Marshall Elementary School right now. That are, they're not currently operational, they're stored there. But there was some overcrowding issues in this building, and we talked with the building principal, and rather than put them in, for lack of a better word, cold storage temporarily, they've been moved over here and utilized as classrooms. That is the cost to move them.
And would they be, would, would you move them back later on, or would they just stay in here?
Well, at some point, hopefully, they won't be needed here, and then we would decide what we want to do with them, right? Whether we move them, or sell them, or discard them, I, I don't know that. But it is very expensive to move those things. And then you have to, when they move, they have to be, um, set up, right? All the electricity and all the requirements have to be, you know, plugged in and taken care of.
Okay. And my third is page 11, um, and some other pages as well, page 51 and page 75. We're giving, um, money to back-to-work solutions. Is this something that we will get reimbursed by the state?
I believe the reimbursement is, we chose option two. There was option one and option two. And we had, you know, we were one of the only districts that had onsite testing, uh, for a long period of time, now going on two years. We had it up and running two, three days a week now. Our board president showed we have it six days a week this week coming up. And, uh, we negotiated at what we think is a fair price. Uh, $75 a test with back-to-work solutions. The reimbursement rate, I think, is 40-ish. Dr. Alderelli would know that better, he's working closely with them. So we will get reimbursed for a portion of that.
Okay.
As you know, we're self-insured though, too, so even those, unless it's paid for by the federal government, even those that the employees don't pay anything for, that are fully, uh, covered by our insurance, we pay because we are fully insured.
Okay, just two more things I have. Uh, one, one is page 49. We got a gazebo for $2,957. I wanna know where we put the gazebo?
Off the top of my head, I believe that was a, a PTO-funded-
Okay.
-thing that was a donation-
Okay.
-at one of the schools. Do you remember, off the top? I don't remember which school. I don't remember the school. But it was a PTO-funded, um, they raised money for that, and that's what that was.
Okay. And finally, there were just a few, um, line items which talked about lunch refund and subscription bus refund. I know there are some parents who've not got the refund for subscription busing. And what is the process for getting that refund for parents?
Yeah, if anyone is, has frustration with that and hasn't been able to get either a lunch refund or a transportation for a subscription bus that wasn't offered, at least, or wasn't offered for a period of time, they should get a prorated, um, refund. Uh, contact my office. We'll take care of it. My office or, or, uh, with Ann in the business, Ms. Gluck in the business office. We've had a few that, you know, for whatever reason, they didn't get processed as quickly as they should've. But obviously, we don't want anybody's money, uh, that, you know, they didn't, we didn't provide the service. We will get that back as quickly as we can.
And just one thing, I missed this one. I just want to understand, um, on page 58, um, there is, um, BOE caucus dinner, and there is a big la, a big number which says cafeteria amount. What does that mean? What does cafeteria amount mean? Page 58.
Well, the cafeteria account is where we pay through Chartwell's funds for. And that particularly, I want to have to check what bill that's for. But we get reimbursed, the, the BOE caucus dinners are what they are. You, that's the dinner that's provided. You know, they don't do it for free. But most of the monies we get from our food service is reimbursements from the state and federal government that we get. And then we get invoice from the provider. You know, last year, over time, it was Chartwell's. This year, we're working with Matios. So there's monthly bills in there. Sometimes they're pretty substantial, 'cause we serve, you know, anywhere close to 10,000 meals a day. So that's usually a significant amount. That's where that money goes, through the cafeteria account.
Uh, that would be all. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Okay.
You have our three questions today, traditionally?
I have, uh, two questions-
Okay.
-for the, uh, the finance. One is about the roofing. So, uh, I see we have the bid. Is this, uh, do we have, I, I know in our budget, we, we planned at the beginning of the year with $2 million to fix the roof. And what is this? We, is this for regular fix-up, or we, we are taking on a, a, a roof that's not part of that, the $2 million?
It's a great question, Mr. Shi. And I've come to expect, you know, significant questions from you. The, what, what the, that bid was for, and we actually rejected a prior bid, that bid's for roofing repairs. So during the year, let's say that, um, the facility manager, JP Stevens, you know, called Mr. Colley Bus's office and said, "We have a leak in the auditorium."
Okay, that's, that's it. You don't need to go, that's, that's not a part of the $2 million.
Okay.
Just regular, okay. That, that, I got my answer.
Okay.
The, the other is the transportation, right? We have these new bids. And we spoke about that this year, we need to look at, relook at these routes. And the, some of the routes has been like that for many, many years. And, uh, some of the, the, the buses won't have like, you know, 10, 15 kids on, on a 54-passenger bus. So if we, is this after we did that exercise? Or this is still the tr, traditional route that we've been, um, using? Or this is the route that's been filled up? 'Cause I'm looking at, this is 2021 to 2022. This is for the next school year. Just, just wanna, uh, clarify on that.
That's for, uh, this school year, the remainder of this school year through June 30th, 2022?
Speaking of the mic, please, Ms. Gluck.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay. It is for the current school year of the 2122 school year, uh, through June 30th.
Okay.
So in answer to your question on, Mr. Shi, and you did raise a good question that you've been involved in this over some time, so you have history of it, that we did look at the routes this year. As everybody knows, you had a difficult time in September when we, we lost those, um, 50-plus routes, and we scrambled to try to get that done as quickly as we can. Um, we realized some of those routes that were renewed, which was, the process is, if you agree to the, whatever rate is set by the state. Last year's rate was 1.69%. We thought that was a fair renewal rate, so we renewed all the routes that we currently had with the vendors who were willing to do that. Unfortunately, if you don't provide enough scrutiny and look at all those routes, as Mr. Shi said, some of those routes might've had 10 children, 15 children, 20 children, instead of, you know, a close-to-capacity bus. So we're working on that right now, and our plan is to have those done by the end of this month internally with our transportation department. And then Ms. Gluck and I will review those. And then we're gonna put those out to bid and see what comes back. You know, we're concerned, though, that with the increase in all the costs and everything, that some, if you look at some of the, the routes, the per-day routes, daily routes that are on the agenda now, they're much higher than what they were traditionally. So we wanna do two things. We wanna consolidate as many of those routes as we can to be cost-effective and efficient. And we also, as everybody knows, we've talked about it for a few months now, we're, we're buying 30 additional buses. Hopefully, get our, our fleet up to about 30 operational that we have. That's a significant amount. 60 bus routes with a triple, 60 buses, if we can get that many drivers with triple tiers, that's 180 routes. That's half of our about 400 routes. So we're hopeful that we can save the district money, and then also, more importantly, that we own it then. Then we don't have to go out to bid for these special education routes that change periodically and things, and not be held over a barrel for $450 per day routes. That's our goal.
Okay, so since, uh, I, we are on the bus topic, I just have a couple of things. One is, um, last year, when we had the, the committee meeting, we talked about that, uh, for some of the kids in our district, we, um, two years ago, that, that, for high school, they were, um, using the two-mile radius. And, um, a year ago, it was not notified to these, these, uh, parents that, hey, you know, you gotta, you gotta pay for it, and it was a mistake. And I guess not a lot of people paid attention to it. That's why there was some confusion at the beginning of this school year and say, hey, why, why I'm paying for it? And we talked about, uh, notifying these parents, uh, in February about, you know, this impact. So I hope we're still on target for that. And the other thing is, um, I'm pretty sure that you guys are on top of it, and, and, and will notify the, these parents. And the other thing related to the bus is, today is a delayed opening, right? And, um, we know every time we have a delayed opening, um, you, you don't know when the bus is coming. So we are in a, in a process of, I hope the folks that are coming to meetings that you are aware, that we're doing pilot, uh, with a GPS on our buses. We're doing 10 buses. Right, so one of the parents actually asked me, what are the 10 routes? If, if you have a chance, you know, after the meeting, send me the 10, uh, routes, I'd be appreciative. So today will be a perfect day to get feedback from these parents and, hey, did that help? And, um, moving forward, um, we're buying 30 buses, and we have 27 or 28 buses. And I hope that, that this is on the agenda. We are putting GPS on all these 50, you know, 57 buses in September so we can help, uh, the parents with some of these frustration of waiting for the buses, especially on a day like, you know, today. I hope that, that we get it done. I don't know which committee is supposed to follow up on this. Um, it's, it's, it was supposed to be part, top part of transportation committee. I, I, you know, I hope we don't have to have a transportation committee to, to, to do that. And relating it to the other thing that we spoke about, uh, last year, is expansion of the parent help desk, right? So, uh, Mrs. White has been advocating for the parent help desk, and we have, you know, four or five different categories. And we talked about expanding the categories to academics, to extracurriculum, activities, and any school-specific issues. I'm just wondering, you know, if, if we can put it on the agenda and get it done, uh, before the, you know, the new school year starts, so we have, uh, more ways for parents to communicate with the district and whatever is the right department for all these issues. Uh, I, I know it's, it's a, it's a big undertaking, uh, but if we can put it on the agenda, um, let's get it done, right? And you, you did allude to, uh, relook at some of the, the bus routes. And, um, I, I'm glad that we're doing it, and this is the right time to do it. If we keep delaying it, then, you know, we're, we're gonna have issues with, with bidding out and stuff like that. So I really appreciate it that the administration is, is looking into, um, these buses, these routes, to, to, um, reduce the cost for, for the district.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Okay. I just want to encourage the parents and anyone else that has questions or problems to use the parent help desk. If you're having any difficulty, you know, just reach out. I've mentioned this in the past so many times. You know, when you do call there, you, you're issued a number, and we can track it, and you can track it. This is such a good tool for, you know, for you as parents and for us as the district to see where we can improve. We are gonna expand on this. There, you know, there's, you know, a whole lot that is happening. So, um, please, use it, and, you know, it's worth the, the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Board President?
Yes.
Did you need to say something? It reminded me, I forgot to mention-
Sure.
About the, the ticket numbers for the parent help desk. I don't think that we're generating ticket numbers. So, Dr. Brigant, can you look into it? And it makes it a little harder to, to, to track, 'cause, you know, you, you saw the example that I gave you. There's a parent who tried to get a refund, and there was no ticket number. We can say, you know, ticket number 1, 2, 3, 4, can you look into it? So if we can have our IT to look into generating a, a, you know, a ticket number, it's much easier to track.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Uh, Mr. Rivera, any board member comments?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Patel?
Just a quick question to Dr. Brigant. In regards to our returns of the, the Apple MacBooks, and what did we get in, uh, in terms of buyback money for, um, if Mr. Burka is here, or if you know from him, uh, how much money we received for selling those used, uh, MacBooks, and when we bought the new ones?
It's a great question. I, I know about what it is. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but the MacBooks that were used that we, um, the four to 5,000 of them that we had, depending on, you know, the grade and how well they were maintained and the status that they were in, it generated enough to make our first lease payment for all the ones that we bought. So it was in the air, in the ballpark of 1.5 to 1.7 million dollars. Thank you.
Yeah, you're right. I, if, if, I think it was, uh-
Mr. Shi, yes.
I'm sorry. Uh, Dr. Brigant, you're right. If I recall, that the first year's paid by, you know, setting all these, uh, old, um, Apple MacBook. And we actually got more MacBooks than we actually returned. And, uh, it, it's just fully paid.
Thank you. Mr. Bureau Patel?
Yes, Mr. President. I want to comment, uh, something on the committee structures. So when I looked at the email that you sent about the committee structures, I was very impressed about that, because for the first time, uh, we have descriptions. Very easy-to-understand descriptions. So it makes sense what we are supposed to do, and it's very clear and concise and very helpful. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Podolsky?
Yes, I also would make the comment about the committee structures. The descriptions of them and the reorganization was very good. And along with that, our building assignments. I just wanted to report back, it was very exciting, and there was a little tiny thing you put in there. Could you contact the school by February 1st?
Yes.
It just was a little touch to get me going. And I had some wonderful conversations with people at Woodbrook School and James Madison Intermediate, and we're really looking forward to getting together. But that February 1st got me moving. So just that little nudge made a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Podolsky. Um, I, I have a board member comment prior to, uh, opening up to the public. So, um, Mr. Rivera and I had the opportunity in the last month or so with Dr. Brigant to tour every single school. We first, uh, toured the South Side schools before the holidays, and then we, um, toured all of the North Side buildings, uh, last Friday. And it was impactful. What made it impactful for me, obviously, growing up, um, on the South Side, I don't get the opportunity other than when I come to meetings like this, or I go to the gymnasium to, uh, coach basketball or something like that. What made it impactful is that we, um, this is coming off of our reorg meeting when we had so much, uh, passion from our, um, our parents and students about, um, the challenges that each building faces. And what we observed, granted, it was only one day, but what we observed was such a vast, uh, difference in, let's take, um, elementary. Let's take our special education, right? So we went to the FDR Round Building. We went to all of the elementary schools. We went to JMI, JMP. We went to middle schools, everything. And one thing is, is certainly clear, that Edison is so diverse in its needs, in its buildings. Certainly, the same architect did not design everything, 'cause everything looks very, very, very different. Some things look like a time capsule, and somebody, uh, thought something looked cool in the 1970s that probably doesn't look so cool anymore. But the point is that it was very, very impactful to see things on both the South and the North Sides that we hadn't seen before. And we saw an active building. We saw a cafeteria at lunch in the middle schools. We saw cafeteria at lunch during, at JP Stevens. We saw what passing looked like in the hallways. We understood what it meant to, um, see the security guards, um, in the buildings and, and how they're positioned, and seeing how the administration comes out of the offices and pleases the hallways, and seeing how hard the teachers are working, and how everybody's wearing a mask, and it gets stuffy, and some rooms are hot and some are cold. We get it. Again, it was a brief visit for us, but my point is that we're embarking on this committee of the whole for our finance committee. And what we're asking the board to do is have a baseline of knowledge, essentially, and, uh, of what the needs are, right? Before we move forward with what our goals will be and how we're going to achieve the goals, and how we take what, all of the work that has been done and morph it into what we're going to collectively achieve, we have to, um, basically agree upon, you know, what the needs are. So what I encourage the board to do, and I'm saying it publicly, I'll say it in an email to everyone, is, is contact Dr. Brigant and set up a tour, and see how we can go to each building as board members, and have a different understanding from an active school day and what the challenges are. Go to the schools at 7:00 AM. Go to, try to get by on Grove Avenue in the morning. Try to go down Boulevard to the Eagles. There's, there's safety issues. Your people, the kids are crossing Route 1 and Old Post Road and getting to Edison High School, and it's dangerous. And what can we do with the Township Liaison Committee? What can we do with our, um, our, our, uh, mayor's administration, our town council? What can we do to work together to just promote safety in the schools? What can we do to work together to just promote safety in the schools? Not just in the schools, but when children are coming to school, when children are leaving. And we are going to be having that committee meeting in February, the first one, and we're going to be setting that up soon. So I encourage everyone to certainly set up. I know some longtime board members have seen it a million times, and I'm the new guy, so it's a little different for me, but I think a little refresher is important. So with that said, yes, Ms. Madiger.
Yes, sorry. Because when I spoke the last time, I was speaking on the finance resolutions, that was not my open board member comments.
Oh, okay. You close it out before we move to the public. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I didn't realize that we moved on to the other one. So just, I just had one suggestion. I mean, GPS trackers are great, and I know that it would be a tremendous resource. I just had one more idea for transportation, Dr. Bragan, and that idea is that, you know, when the school is closed, or, you know, we have a snow day, we, all parents get a text, an email, a phone call, that the school is closed. Now, obviously, we have all this data base, we have the infrastructure, so can we do one thing, that we create, you know, these, and I think that's, I don't know if you have it already, because I've got that text once, but how about if a bus is running more than 10 minutes late? Parents get a text message that, you know, the bus is running 10 minutes late, or the bus is not going to come. So if there is a way to tell our bus vendors that if a certain bus, you know, something's happened to the driver, the driver is running late, if there's a way to tell folks, that would be very helpful. I know that once, I have got such a message, maybe two months ago, that the bus is delayed.
I think it is possible to do it, but it's not being done consistently, so we will definitely look at how we can do that.
Yeah, because that would be very helpful, because people, you know, can choose whether the parent wants to drop them, you know, not everybody will be converging at the same time.
Agreed.
And my second thing that I wanted to say was, there is some buzz around where people are thinking that, oh, the Transportation Committee is eliminated, or the Special Needs Committee is eliminated. No, those committees are still very much there. We have rebranded it to make it more effective, to make it more efficient. As far as the Transportation Committee is concerned, we are actually going to be having open meetings, Zoom meetings with the public, so that people can come and share their concerns, they can share their ideas. We will have the administration there for them to kind of have this face-to-face interaction. And as Doug showed in his presentation at the beginning of this meeting, there will be actionable items that would be developed. So none of those committees have been eliminated, they're very much there. The Special Needs Committee has been, is under the umbrella of curriculum. The Curriculum Committee meets very often, mostly every month, and this way, we will have more of a focus on special needs as well, which we were doing earlier also, but then now we're going to make it more streamlined and more focused. So I just wanted to put it out there for anybody that thinks the committees have not been eliminated, they are very much there, we're just trying to make it more efficient, more effective, more interaction, and so that we can resolve the issues. Transportation was a nightmare last year, and a lot of those issues were outside the Board of Ed's control, because there were no drivers available, but if we tackle those issues early on, we can certainly make a lot more progress and not face those issues again in the next school year. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Madiger.
Board President?
Board President?
Since she just brought some stuff up with the committee, can I ask one quick question regarding that committee?
Sure.
Is that like a third board meeting that would occur in regards to our current structure? Where there's only three or four board members, not the whole nine?
I'm sorry, what was the last part of that question?
So is that like a third board meeting that you are conducting in regards to that committee, basically, where you're discussing with a Zoom call with the parents and everybody else, and there's only four board members on that committee, or three, whatever it is right now, and not all nine?
Why would that be a full board, why would that be another board meeting?
Because you're having public comments, you're having public information, which is already happening here, so it basically is like a third, and it's all actionable, right? You said? So if that is the case, would you be making decisions in that committee where it's only four board members that are making that decision and not all nine?
No, no decisions can be made in committee meetings at all. The committees meet, they discuss, in this case, they obtain data from the public. So this way, if your only access to our administration or to our board is via WhatsApp or Facebook, that you're, you know, access, you actually can, in an official way, obtain the access to us, and just that committee. And never would action be taken, because none of the committees could take action, they simply provide guidance and suggestions to hopefully present to the entire board. Ms. Peng, we went around, but I see that you're here. Do you have any open board member comments before we move to public comments?
Yeah, yeah, just something that I just remembered. The Athletic Committee has been proposing and pushed for a volleyball intermuero program, which I was very happy to see that has been implemented in the middle school. Just want to tell the parents, the students are given a questionnaire or survey to ask if they're interested, so if they missed, they can, I think, I hope they can still submit it if they're interested, the intermuero volleyball program, for spring season for middle school. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Peng.
Board President?
Yes.
Okay. I've, since we heard everyone's talking about committees and remind me something. Right now, we have four projects ongoing. We have a, the JP Stevens baseball field, it's been approved by, at the state. We have three more projects, which is the air conditioning of the Edison High School cafeteria, redo the auditorium of Edison High School, and the fourth one is the cafeteria in JP Stevens. With the baseball field, it's somewhere around 1.62 million dollars, and the other three are around $4 million. So in the new committee structure, you mentioned that the Budget Committee is for small projects, and, you know, I just want to see, to find from you as to, for these projects, there will be follow-ups, there will be additional things that we need to do when it comes back from the state for approval, so which committee is the appropriate committee to discuss this? Because you said some of the things are not permitted to, discussing the Budget Committee, I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Shi, let me ask you to be clear, are those things already budgeted for and decided on, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't see a reason, I mean, I'm actually, I think you're a fantastic person to be on the Budget Committee, because you have all of this intimate knowledge. So I'm glad you're going to be on that committee, and we could, we're going to rely on you to catch us up to speed. Obviously, we work in an advisory role with the superintendent and the administration, the business administrator, so I think that your knowledge and knowledge of past projects and making sure things move forward will be very valuable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move to public comments. You have six total minutes. Actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to make you stand there for just a minute. I'd like to remind everyone, all speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who are legal, where, whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Thank you. Doctor.
Thank you. Just an introduction of myself, I was on the board for seven years, I was president for two years, ending up in 2017, from 11 to 17. 25 years as superintendent, and degrees, doctorate from Columbia, NYU, and Fordham. And also, I just want to, congratulations to the new board members, and also to President Doug Schneider, and of course, Vice President Shivie, who did such a great job when I was there at curriculum, on curriculum, and also on policy, that I'm sure you still have. So congratulations to them. I'd also like to say that, and also to Dave Rubin. You didn't mention the most important part of his curriculum vitae, and that is that he was the Board Attorney for Mannville School District when I was superintendent. So it's been 20 years, and I don't think I would have recognized him, he had gorgeous black hair back then, so. But, and also, I just want to say a word for Jonathan Bush. I had great experience with Jonathan Bush, he was a marvelous person, and gave us great advice. He was, we did spend a bit of money, more than you would have liked, because of all of what had happened with the schools burning down and special education situations and everything else. So, but as far as the, as far as the situation of how to select the Board Attorney, I think it was very strange, and I was quite insulted when I was leaving back in December 2017, when I heard that Jerry Shi and Shannon Peng met on the second floor of Wegmans in Woodbridge to interview Board Attorneys so that they could put them in, and as far as I know, they let go the Bush, the Bush group. So I don't think that was really the proper way to select the Board Attorney, and when I did come to a meeting or two afterwards, I found out that they didn't even know basic education law, the person, I think he came from Jersey City, didn't know basic education law. So I can assure you, Mr. Rubin, Dave Rubin, has been an expert on special education, that's how I first met him, and went around the state wherever he was speaking on special education, and that's one of the key things in all of the legal issues that come up, special education. So also, I just want to thank you all for the Lincoln School, for getting that underway. I'm not sure how the funding was, I see there's $15 million there in capital reserves, so I guess that would help out. I want to also congratulate you on the debt being zero, we had worked on that. I hope the federal government notices that and reduces the 30 trillion. Now, just some of the history, I was a history teacher, so I have to go over history. In 2011, we expanded the JP Stevens with 10 classrooms, that was mostly for science and math. 2013, we expanded Edison High School with 10 classrooms, mostly for science. In 2014, we did James Monroe Burn Down, and so we had quite a problem there. The insurance company wouldn't pay us, they would, the max they would give us was $9.5 million, and that was, it was going to cost us a good deal more than that. So we had to go to court, so we had to go for a referendum. We did get passed 18 million, I'm sure that's the last referendum, because that's probably more what can be passed, and not 70, 80, 90 million, or those are high ones. So then we also did James Monroe, we were able to not use any of the referendum money, we didn't use a nickel of it, because we got a settlement for $23 million. They only, so we got enough to pay, we actually built it for, the cost was less than 20 million, just under 20 million. Others that were going at the time in, let's see, New Brunswick and in Franklin were going for $50 million for 800 students, this was one for 20 million, basically, for 500, 600 students. So we did pretty well with James Monroe, referendum did pass. Expand, we also, 2016, expanded Menlo Park and also the Woodbridge Brook School, some of the, we did work on the Menlo Park and the gymnasium and the others, expanded it. We were due to expand in 2017, 18, we had all the architectural plans ready to go on the Woodrow Wilson Middle School, now I understand they have some sort of transitional classrooms that they've just added on, but, so I'd just like to say, piecemeal is better, if you want to connect to reality, the piecemeal philosophy is better, which means gradually, little by little. And if you do, just, you know, looking at the different things, and it sounds like some good projects going. JP Stevens has 2,700, basically, now probably going up to 2,900, according to the Sundance Demographic Study 2019. Edison High School is 2,200, probably go up to 2,400. How about Edison High School? I guess, I don't know if the president of the board went there, but I know is the alma mater of the superintendent of schools. So I think that because, obviously, there has to be some support from the North and the South, that we always do things in conjunction with each other, with commitments made to both. So I just wanted to make that point, and that's pretty much all of it, except that, 16 seconds, okay. I'll quote the superintendent's where he quotes Warren Benes, "Leadership is the capacity to translate vision into reality." So to connect the vision, don't just go by the architect's vision of the great things that can happen, rather go by reality, maybe start from what can we get passed by the others, and then what can we get from capital reserve and from fund balance or whatever else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Since my name was mentioned, can I have an opportunity to say something?
Go ahead.
So Frank, Dr. Hill, I'm so glad to see you here, and I'm not surprised you're here, because I know why, because this law firm, right? So you talked about the, you brought up the history about the James Monroe School, and you knew we had to hire David Adelston to handle some of the legal issues, right? That's a fact. Go to 2017, look at the bill list, there was a payment there. And you knew what happened when Judge Berman came and interviewed all of you guys, and you know what that charge was. So I just want to put it out there, and the talking about, you know, me and Shannon Peng meeting with the other attorneys, yes, we did, and there were other board members as well, right? At least we met more than one firm, multiple firms, so it's much better than meeting with one firm and only two board members. If you say that was wrong, then this is wrong too. You can't, you can't, you know, eat the cake both in two different ways. And I respect you, I respect your education, your background, I worked with you for, you know, five years, whatever, we're on board, we even run together. But, you know, I just have to say, the pieces that I have to say is, you know some of the facts, and you're not, you're not talking about those facts. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms.
Board President, I, can I make a comment?
Yes, Ms. Peng.
Since both Shivie and Frank mentioned that interview of Board Attorney a few years ago, I just want to remind Frank, you know, and you, I'm sure you knew, there's another person who's there, happened to be Vice President Shivie, who also interviewed all those attorney, not even once, twice, I do, your famous Wegman meeting, okay? And I, actually reminded me, since Shivie brought this up earlier too, I have to ask this question, if Shivie thinks so highly of Jonathan's firm, Bush firm, then why, in the process of replacing that firm, she's involved in both interviewed, interviewed actually four attorneys in two occasions, two meetings? I just, I just wonder why. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Your name is?
Anita, and from Edison. First of all, thank you very much to all the board members, the new and the outgoing members, for your dedication and time, public service is tough, and thank you very much. Just saw a couple of things play out in the last one or two weeks, and I just wanted to mention that these are challenging times for the executive leadership. You're all doing an extremely good job, all the principals of all the schools, including the, you know, JP Stevens High School and Mr. Ross Edison High School, they've done an incredible job by supporting all the parents and kids during this time. So I just wanted to recognize that. And then I'm, you know, I just wanted to let, before I go to the main topic, putting ourselves in each other's shoes, the residents, understanding different points of view during this challenging times, and having an open dialogue, bringing people together, and collaboration for this year of 2022, that's what the residents are looking for. And we need to show our future generations, I've talked to most of the board members, that we have a responsibility to show that we can collaborate and get solutions. And I can only think of one thing, that we can start a dialogue a little earlier, especially when you're taking executive leadership decisions, a little earlier, ahead of time with the community, we are reachable, you can talk to us anytime. Having said that, I just came here to mention two, three important points. The first is the mental health of the kids, and I saw the survey which came out, we have beacons of light in the council meeting where we talk positive things, it was a great survey, the results have come out today. And one of the things which came out was how to engage kids productively, and one of the areas was after-school clubs by keeping kids busy. I just wanted to let all the board members know that this is COVID time, we are, people are getting back to jobs, and the businesses are in the recovery mode, and we have, we as parents try to do fundraisers, not only for after-school clubs, but for competitions as well, and I keep sharing a lot of competitions for the kids. If, it's just a request for this year, especially in some areas like robotics or other science and technology areas, they're a little more expensive, if the board can support us by giving a little bit more funds to the after-school clubs, I'm talking on behalf of all the schools in Edison. It's a pride to see my home team go for competitions after, after... It's a pride to see my home team go for competitions after, after, I mean, utilizing the launch pad of the after-school clubs. Like when I went to the Odyssey of the Mind about three years back as a coach, I was so happy to see my home team from Edison participate. So if you can, you know, this year, take a look at that, and if you can help us out, because this time it's tight, our economy is tight, you know, a lot of parents cannot give too much of, keep on donating for these fundraisers. Having said that, each of the board member, I guess, will be attached to one or two schools. I think the board president made a very good comment as well, that we have to, and the Madam Vice President and all the board members, Jerry and everybody, do come to the PTO meetings. We are a dedicated set of parents, and the BOE license for each of the schools sometimes drop in, talk to us, we'll tell you what our school needs are, what's going on. I know the social media and WhatsApp is one platform, but we love to see each of you in the schools face to face. I know a lot of you have been in the schools before, but do try to drop in. And last but not the least, if you can have a cybersecurity, an internet security seminar, very important, you know how the TikToks and the things, the incidents have happened? If the, you know, if we can, if the district can launch a cybersecurity seminar for all the kids, you know, it'll really, really help the parents and the community. Thank you so much, and thank you for, each of you for the incredible job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. And thank you for your passion for the Edison schools.
Mr. President, I want to comment on that.
Yes, Bureau. Mr. Patel.
Anita, thank you so much for coming here. One of the things I agree with this resident over here, Anita, is about the AI, the program that, after-school programs and the AI program that she mentioned about, there were a few students who attended some programs outside of the curriculum last year, and then they worked hard and, you know, collected funds, whatever they had, but they tremendously benefited from the programs. So, yeah, programs like that and the fundraisers for science and technology, anything that we can do, Dr. Bregan, to help out, let's look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Board President.
Yes, Mr. Shi.
You know, Anita, it just reminds me something. Dr. Bregan, last year, we talked about seminars for parents, for mental health and those kind of stuff, right? We said, because it was December and the holidays and stuff, we're pushing it into January. Today is January 20th, and we on target for January or early February? It doesn't matter, as long as this is still being planned, that it's going to happen. You know, it's very important that we continue, continue our commitment to this. It's an important thing for, for the students and for parents to recognize the mental health issues for our students. Thank you.
It is still planned, Ms. Shi. I'll get that date from Ms. Millar, and we'll get that out ASAP.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce.
I would like to thank the superintendent for, along with the board, for keeping our school open, because there's been a lot of mental illness that has been misdiagnosed, and it's a big problem for children. And the loneliness and the depression has set with some of our children, which is very, very terrible. I've noticed it with the children. They need the social interaction at all. Number two, I want to applaud the educators of Edison for doing such an outstanding job with our children. I was at the Martin Luther King Day Program on Saturday, and you're talking about kids who have outstanding vocabulary skills, outstanding writing skills, and they even think properly for the future. I was so impressed with our students from this Edison school system. It made me feel proud to be a product of the Edison school system. And I want them, I want to thank all of you, especially our superintendent. I think we're doing a great job with the students that we have in Edison. Thank you.
I agree. Mr. Menesh.
Thank you. One of the things I'm going to talk about today is music. Time after time, I came to these meetings, and I have caught Dr. Bregan's predecessor, your predecessor too. We need money. So what I did is, I know you guys are busy, so let me do some hard work and find out. So if you want to start writing down, you could do it, but if you miss, I'll send you an email. Between J.P. Stevens and Edison High, we have 120 kids in Edison High who's in the music program, and 180 in J.P. Stevens. Mark, Dina Cola, Mr. Zazali, I forgot the other gentleman's name, but they're doing an outstanding job. Why I'm saying their name, because they are doing their work, we are not doing ours. Over the last 10 years, their instruments are breaking apart. Jerry Shi happens to be my buddy, and I thought he's going to give me money. I got squat. So over the years, whatever the superintendent gives 10,000 to one school and 10 to other, that's all they got. To change our equipment, the instruments, between the Edison High and J.P. Stevens, they need about $400,000. And Doug, I'm sure with your intelligence, you'll find the money. If you need help, I'll tell you where the money is too. J.P. Stevens need plus or minus 215,000, and Edison High needs plus or minus 195. This is a total number. Ms. P will agree with me, because she knows I'm on top, top of these numbers 100%. Now, let's get back to staffing of music. Right now, in J.P. Stevens, 19,000 is paid by BOE, while the other 17 is paid by band parents fundraisers. I think we could help them out for those 17. One other thing I wanted to do when I was part of the music parents, is to get them 18-wheeler, where their instrument is put on the same place, it's not locked down by bungee strips, and then it moves during the transportation. Last six years, we haven't done it. If you guys could buy them 18-wheelers, I'll provide you enough advertisement to pay for the damn thing. And that's my guarantee to you. Let's get both high schools the money they need. When they go out, when a South Brunswick brings 18-wheeler, and their picture's on there, ours come with a rider truck. We say Edison is the best schools, let's prove it. We could give them this money that they need, and let's tap all the directors' shoulders saying, you know what? What do you need? We'll get it to you. Let's give us the number one. They have done it in the past, and they could do it again. Now, in the transportation of music events, as I said, 18-wheelers is needed. Last year, they were given trucks, a Portofed, two trucks. But you know what? Only one of our drivers was able to drive it. One was on leave, and the other one was sick. Problem was, one week JP used it, one week Edison used it, and we spent the money. Portofed pays some of it, and some is paid by the parents, and the parent drives the trucks. Now, let's go back to the, one of the things I'll talk about is, somebody mentioned to me a few days ago. We are looking into it, something called six-month events. Six months, we will have music, six months foreign language, six months tech. And I know I spoke to one of the board members, but I will bring you up to this, to all of you. Issue is foreign language. You guys are pushing on foreign language, we don't have enough teachers, and we need about all teacher to take care of all middle schools. And this issue is from Dr. Bregan's school. Sir, it's from your schools coming up again, middle schools need help. And we need teachers. Let's hire teachers, so that we don't have to do, do this and lose time. If we could do this, teachers, you know, six months, somebody will learn foreign language, they'll forget in another six months. Same thing is in music. When the kid comes to ninth grade, they will not have enough music. So help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben Cap.
Thank you, Wendy, Edison. I think, good evening, everyone. Dr. Bregan, first of all, let me say this, even though it is a bit more, I'm going to get some heat, but thank you very much for the communication that you made and allocated, and honoring the two weeks or 10 days that parents presumption of it. I think it did satisfy 95, 97% of those people. And I also thank Dr. Adrally for calling some of those parents that are actually presumed sick and actually trying to accommodate. I think you guys has got a lot of heat, and you guys have done a fantastic job. And I know that, as I told you that, some people may not agree, but 95, 97% of the people are truly, truly happy that those 10 days were given immediately after the New Year. The second thing is, you know, I think before I move on to the others, I think there is some negativity that was going targeted against you, Dr. Bregan. I think your union is also involved, and the union, one of the guys telling them, go to council, go to do this. So I think I thank Dr., sorry, Ajay Patel from the council, telling them that it is a dead road, don't come to us, we have no control over BOE. I think Ajay Patel cleared it, so please watch your back. I think your own union is going after you, advising parents and students to go to the council. I don't know the reason why they want to pull this BOE value. So it's a dirty la, it's not dirty laundry. There is, I think it may be case by case issue, but I think watch your back, no politics here. I think the unions cannot come back again here and to push the parents to do that. And Dr. Bregan and Biology Club, I wrote an email, I know that you'll be talking to Dr. Shalap, and maybe you can take time for another week, but there are four parents, four students that work very hard, they gave you detailed thing, and there's a presentation. I think we need to encourage those JP kids to get the bio club, if possible this year, if not, at least for next year, because I'm big proponent of giving an opportunity for those students who deserve, and especially bio club is one of the most valuable club. And I know that Shivvi's kid, sorry, Jerry's kid is part of the club 10 years back, don't know the reason why it is no longer there. So I think Doug, I was very happy when you and Brian Rivera has been elected, young and dynamic. And I know whatever happened, I'm really soothing to my ears that there is a good debate and discussion. You guys don't need to agree. If you agree, that means I will call you as a collusion. If you guys don't agree, that means you guys are working. So at least positive. I think Brian, out of all the committees, I like your appointment, because you're an educator, you know what it takes. I think curriculum committee is something that I'm looking forward, I have great expectations from you. And I don't care about the other committees, because all these committees take big, big things, but I want to see the results. And I didn't want to, you know, get to political thing, but I think, but I have to, because Doug, you suppressed the public comments for the board attorney's appointment. I'm okay with that. But I just thought that you guys, you may not be having all the information, because I am also here for 10 years, watching all these people. Your vice president is a big proponent of transparency. And today, the way she rushed, the way she read 20 minutes of reading the profile of somebody, the justification she has made, doesn't it give you some kind of indication that why she's rushing? Didn't she go to Mr. Bush's two months back, in IDO, that rally that the mayor has been? What was the relation? There is a conflict here. So I think, I know that you have to work with your vice president, but you also need to understand that she's a big proponent of transparency. Now she's telling no RFP, pushing it, pushing, okay, let's go for the motion. She wants to suppress people now. I think there is a dual behavior here that I saw. I know her very well, more than you, in fact, I can tell you that. But I think I respect the board attorney, his experience, I read it in the Google, hats off to sir. But the only thing that I want to say that to him is, he could have represented independently by himself, even you pay him 200, 300 dollars per hour, I would have appreciated it. But the Bush firm is politically with, connected with Democratic office, and we are giving 70% of districts? It's not, it should not be as a collusion of Democratic Party wanting all the education boards and trying to win it. You found the right guy. I really give my accolades to you for finding the right person, but he should become, but he's coming from the wrong firm. They left us high and dry last year in January, without giving a notice, even though they have six minutes, six months on the contract. And I, you know that $520,000 that they paid in 2017, but now you're cutting down to 350, that itself, I'm telling 160K saves that you're bringing, then why did the same Bush firm charge us more than half million dollars in 2017? All I'm trying to say this, I have 10 more items to talk about it, but I certainly felt that the lawyer appointment was good, I vote for him, I will give him 300 dollars power, but the wrong firm was chosen. I think in future, if he's going to come as independent consultant, pay him what he deserve for his experience, but also see the motives of your vice president. She is a vocal proponent of the transparency, and today she shut down, rushed, oh, motion, motion, motion. It shows her opportunism. I really, really want to call it out and truly appreciate that. And the last but not least, I saw that there is a rebuttal transcript is going to be taken away, but if you want, I can read that class that you have it. There is an opportunity for each and every member to actually give a rebuttal, provided if the same topic was contradicted. So hopefully, Dr. Bregan, I have 10 more items, but I'll come next Tuesday to make sure that today's importance, I don't want to rein the appointment of the attorney, and thank you all. Doug, all the best. Keep an eye. You're a new leader. I want you to listen to all eight members, not to one person. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do. Gentlemen in the back.
You've got to love when the council, council vice president comes, former educator. How are you, council vice president? Board President, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you. I didn't know who you were back there.
Oh, Anthony DiAmber, 25 Wiley.
I see you now without the mask. Welcome here.
Thank you, sir. So congratulations to all the new members. And two phones, and I lost my notes. First, first, first question I have is, and I apologize that I don't know this, in regards to COVID, and let's say like lunch programs, Dr. Bregan, is it one size fits all, or is it school to school on how they decide they're going to go about, you know, seating people and so on and so forth? And the reason why I asked this question is, at James Monroe, and I love the principal at James Monroe, she does a fabulous job, and I'll get to another, I'll get to a point on that in a second, but it's come to my attention that, at lunchtime, at their, while the student is eating lunch, they're not to, not to talk or speak while they're eating. And I got to admit, for first grader, second grader to not be able to speak to their, to their classmate, to the next to them, is problematic, because a lot of the parents are facing these issues when they, when the child comes home. There needs to be some type of release, you know, for the child to speak, and they're first graders. I mean, they're, it's, they should be able to speak. So I, I don't blame her, I don't know if it's, it's, it's district-wide or not, but, you know, that, I feel like that needs to probably be changed, or looked at at least, in my opinion. On a separate note regarding James Monroe, they have a program there, and I really want to credit them and the board, the previous board as well. They have a program called, I believe, Rainbows, and it's, it's for students who lost a loved one, either a parent, I guess, a sibling or something of the sort. And it really, they, they meet like once a week, and it's a, just to kind of talk to other students that have gone through similar situations, and I think it's a terrific program. I don't know if James Monroe is the only school that does it, but it's, should probably be adopted to other schools too. So I just want to congratulate the board. That's, it really is an amazing program, and it helps us at home as well. So, and there was one other concern, not a concern, but, excuse me, Board President. Oh, final thing is, I wasn't here. Oh, final thing is, I wasn't here, I haven't been here in a while. But I know I'm going back on this now, and I don't know if it was, I think, first day of school. I just want to congratulate, Dr. Bregan, on that first day of school, what happened at Lincoln School. I really want to thank you for that. I honestly, that's what leaders do when they see something that's not right. And I want to congratulate the board, the previous board and the previous board president for standing by their superintendent when that happened. That was important. It was symbolic. And I want to thank you. So good luck to the new board, and thank you, sir.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. And we'll look into those, you know, the issues you brought up regarding the lunch at James Monroe. I'm not sure, what we did try to do for the elementary students though, is we asked them all to eat lunch in the classrooms, to try to monitor the close contacts a little bit better. I wasn't aware that we were restricting talking. I don't even know if that's possible with young children. But we'll look into that, and that's a point well taken. And as far as the Rainbows program, Mrs. DeFar is a great job. And she's very compassionate, you know, about trying to meet the emotional needs of all our kids. So we'll take a look at that program if we can, if we haven't already replicated that to other schools. And more importantly, Anthony, you taking a night off from making the flags?
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Deepa Squall.
Tony Pascual to Pine Street. So one question I have.
Can you put the mic down a little bit?
One question I have about the Special Needs Committee and putting that under the curriculum. First, what was the full rationale for doing that? Because of course, it was separate. So it was basically just focused on the special needs. And also, when that is, that committee gets together, how do they get information, or how are they getting information about what they need to discuss? Will Mr. Tuhy be there? Not that he needs another meeting to go to, but, you know, how does that work? Is there a report that goes to the committee? Because you have so many, I think it's a great idea because I heard some of the rationale. But, you know, I think it's, you have a lot of stuff you're going to be talking about. So my concern, which I'm sure you guys have thought about, you know, is how are you guys going to keep focus on the special needs issues or whatever needs to be discussed? Because obviously, all these are all important. But as you know, my big focus is on the special needs. So I just want to make sure that the, you know, that's not lost in everything else is really what I'm just looking for. I know some parents that have heard about this have also had these questions also. So if you guys can just kind of clarify that for me, I'd appreciate that. And the other thing I just want to bring up is, you know, there were some comments made about the changing of the lawyers and, you know, the decision that was made. And, you know, it was said how Mr. Rubin, right, has 30 years of experience in education.
Forty-five.
Oh, 45. Sorry about that, 45. And I just want to say, you know, it's interesting how the former lawyer, and I have this right here from the website, and he was a great guy. I'm not saying him personally. But his areas of practice was governmental representation, employment counseling, and employment litigation, which I don't see anything on there that said education or Board of Education. And I'm sure he's great in those roles there that he practices. But I just find it interesting that there was not any issues or debates from certain board members from having a lawyer who really, according to his information, had no experience in education law or Board of Education. I just don't, I don't understand that, why there would be such an issue of, you know. And looking through the website, I found maybe just one other lawyer, and I looked through it real quick, that had education law. There was no other, anything else, Board of Education or anything like that, where we have a law firm that has, what, over 60 schools? So if unfortunately, the political stuff has to come out, which certain board members keep on saying we should keep away, well then, we should have no issue with the person that was hired. And I hate to bring this up, but I just feel I need to. And as I've said in the past, you know, I went back years ago and watched pretty much every board meeting, you know, that was on YouTube, and just watched every one, just to see how everything went over the years. And I have to say, you know, the former, the former president from last year was, you know, basically, as Dr. Healan said, there was an issue where how the interviews of a certain lawyer was brought up. I think it was 2017 at Wegmans. And I do have to bring this up just because you're accusing another board president of certain things. And this board member actually had these interviews in December before he was even board president. And I confirm that with somebody that was on the board during that time. So if you were to have an issue with the way that the process was done now, why was that not an issue back seven years ago when there was interviews done at a Wegmans even before this person became president? So I guess he knew he was going to become president, which is why he interviewed the lawyers. So I just want to look at the irony there of, we just need to look at what we've done in the past, and now we're accusing certain new people of doing certain things. So just remember what you've done in the past, what's there. And you can go back and watch all the YouTube videos like I did, and you will see the conversations and what actually happened. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Sir.
Board President, before he says something, can I add a comment?
Sure.
And, you know, Mr. Deepa Squall, with all due respect, you can see what I said on record. I am not questioning Mr. Rubin's qualification. Never have I said once about his qualification. So try not to lead into that direction, okay? And as far as, you keep bringing up the Wegmans. If you think that's not the right thing to do, and then why you bring it up? Or why this time is the right thing to do? You can't have double standard. Because your friend is doing it, so it's okay. And if it was not your friend doing it, it's not okay. You have been doing this, meeting after meeting, double standard, okay? With all the ethics violations that was your friend, you never mentioned anything. What is that about? Because as long as your friend, they can get away with a murder, right? If someone who you're opposed to it, you come and put them in a microscope and just blow it up. That's my comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sir.
Board President, before he goes, I would like to comment on that too as well.
Sure. Mr. Patel.
For Shannon.
Sorry. Yeah, to answer Tony's question, why there was not a debate last year? Very simple. Because every board member has been participating in that process of interviewing the three or four attorneys. We had a long meeting, a few hours. We asked the question at that time already. That's the simple answer to your question.
Thank you. Mr. Patel.
I just wanted to say, when you come up here and tell us about double standards, you should look at yourself in the mirror first before you even mention double standards. Because you're an epitome of that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, your name?
Raj Bhagya, 113 Harding Avenue, Edison.
Thank you.
I was not planning to come here and speak, but when I heard the last comments, the very simple question is, what I heard from his comments was, president and vice president or elected people started meeting the lawyer in December. So you had enough time to follow the policy and procedures or to ask for RFP? Why wasn't it done if you had month before starting to meet the people? And why only one lawyer firm was met? That's first question. I hope I get an answer for that in the end. Second question is, Vice President Shivi mentioned that RFP is not required for professional contracts. So two follow-up questions. Doesn't RFP allow us to get the best service and the best price? Did we ensure to get the best price of this? Second is, are we setting a precedent of moving away from RFPs for all the professional contracts from now on? I believe this is setting a precedent to allow vendors to charge more money and taking away from taxpayers' money meant for schools and kids. Thank you. So my question still opens. If in December, we knew the lawyers were supposed to be, the contract was up, why wasn't the RFP process followed? Second question remains, are we moving away from RFP process completely from now on? Thank you.
Thank you. The answer to that question is that the intention was to do an RFP. However, it came to light recently that there was no lawyer under contract after January 31st. I didn't realize that. Normally, what boards do is they renew the contract when they know it's expiring. And I thought we had more time. However, this was an appropriate move at this point. And I don't know if you were here earlier, but in light of that fact, even though we're allowed to appoint a board attorney for one year, my suggestion was to do it only for six months. So this way, it would allow us the time. If the board agrees that Mr. Rubin is doing a great job, we can talk about it. If we agree that we want to do an RFP, we could talk about it. If we agree that we want to get somebody else, however it works. This is not a decision just by me. This is a full board. We have nine members. So that's why we had a vote, and everyone had a say in what happened tonight. Any other comments? Okay. Just one. You have six minutes. Everyone has six minutes to speak. So I move to adjourn to our privileged session now. We don't have any voting items at all for the rest of the night. So we're going to move to adjourn, and we'll be.
Move to privileged session.
Move to privileged session. And we'll adjourn from privileged session. Thank you.
No.
I still have to read.
You got a roll call. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privileged discussion regarding student matters, Edison wetlands contract, property purchase, litigation brought by former employees and students, ETA grievances, perk unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion is second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moham Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
All yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.